We'll call meeting to order. The final meeting of this committee on its own. I certainly hope. First item is the approval of the agenda. I will ask for a motion.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry. It's kind of amusing, the first meeting I had a gamble, the last meeting I have a gamble. What the heck does that mean? Okay. Call for approval of the minutes of the 24th that's applied to us.
Motion approved minutes of the 24th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry. The discussions on the assigned city code sections and the review of the approval of the final report are kind of joined together here. All right, Pat?
Okay.
Patty? So what we'll do is go through, I'm sure everybody read it, and I have to compliment Patty and Wanda, this is extremely easier to read than a DM. I'll start with Rudy on my right and see if there's anything that you have anything particular to discuss through it.
There were a couple things. I wrote Patty and asked her to add to page three, yeah, page three where the rest is my suggestions. And on item two, where it says determine what expertise is required to correctly identify and understand those codes, code infractions, and decide if current staff and or contractors have that expertise. I just wanted to put in parentheses after that sentence, E.G., example given, seawalls and docks, because we're discussing required expertise and it's a typical staff, so.
You want to put that in formal proportion, Rudy?
Yeah. I move to add to the end of number two on page three of 14 at the end of that sentence, E period, G period, docks and, uh, seawalls and docks in parentheses.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion? Call for a motion or a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Continue Rudy.
The rest of the document I thought was blank.
Okay.
No problems anything. There were just a couple of points that I noticed there were, you know, several items where you were going to supply some text.
Yeah, I went through with Wanda and Mark Pata, some of that stuff that were talks about me, where it talks about me supplying something.
Right.
I need to have that discussion with the city attorney in the final.
Okay. All right.
That's fine.
So for the, for the final, should I just remove the highlighting on those?
Say it again, I can't understand.
So for the final that goes to council, should we remove the highlighting on those paragraphs, those bullet points?
Yeah. Once it's all done, yeah. And we had had some discussion of the ISR ratio, and again, we were working on that. My point being that if you drive up and down the streets, especially Bell Isle, that homes are already in place, and we're talking everywhere you see one of the new big box homes, we had a knock down, when new home go up, they've already put in the circular driveway, paper driveways, that far exceed the 65 percent for the ISR, that's a 65 percent ratio, their goes to the 80, 90 percent now. So question put, I guess, to council is, is that the new Bel Air Beach and we need to allow that because they're certainly obviously asking for it, and that's, you know, the higher ISR. It's probably more logical just to say on the front that you cannot paper into the side setbacks.
Right. Yeah, and ISR, the right of way doesn't count in the ISR.
No. The right of way, the first 10 feet, 15 feet, whatever.
That doesn't count in the ISR. It only is the building line. Yeah, and what we found is people are in the property appraiser, and they'll say they got 3,700, maybe 3,700 square feet of living area, and they're using that, and it's a two-story house. Well, that's not correct. In the effect of the ISR, it's really 1,850 because it's two stories. And so they're, just recently had two or three of them that had come in with the wrong numbers and we told them to take them back. And when they do that, and take the right of way out of it, in some cases, well, actually the last two or three, it's changed it for them. They've been backed down to where they shouldn't have been.
Okay.
But I'll give you an example, there's a house over here on 12th and Bay, this guy didn't get a permit, didn't do anything, and we put a stop work order on him, and he's basically papering his whole yard, but he didn't get a permit, so.
So you have control.
Huh?
You have control.
Well, we told him to stop work. He just, he lives on ours, which bought this house. So we're gonna have a battle with him, I'm sure. I mean, he was gonna put a fountain in my office, let's make that.
So bottom line, where do you think we need to change, just the ISR is okay as is?
Well, I think in today's situation, I think it needs to go up a little bit, but you need to verify a little more of that with what the county and the line, see what right.
Right.
So I think we talked about that one.
We did, and I made a note, but I didn't, I don't think I got it in here. Rudy, do you remember what section and paragraph the ISR was in? Because I've got a note to recommend to review the ISR requirement and.
Said, well, said definitions, I think.
And enhance the code for artificial, oh, and the, yeah, artificial turf.
Yeah, it said definitions of 94, and then there are a couple other places.
In the code, yeah.
That addresses the ISR, but the definition is in 94.
I think we just need to do a little more back over, around research on it overall.
Okay.
See if there's any other implications that occur, like are, what insurance would cause that?
All right. And then the other thing that I thought was still up for discussion was we had started talking about AstroTurf logs and decided, let's go take a look at what was going on in Harrison, and that AstroTurf has greatly improved over the old stuff you used to put out on your patio. I thought we had an expert in the city on Bell Isle, and I happened to run across his wife who was walking today, and I asked her, he was in the AstroTurf business, she said, no, he sits in the sports industry, and noticed the people in the AstroTurf industry, but not himself. So I thought we might have had an expert in the park that may be able to get one.
That wasn't Deb, was it? Hmm? Deb, fatigue?
I don't know their names.
They live kind of right after the curb.
Yeah, two down from Jack's Hold.
Yeah.
Right beside the gravel lawn.
Yeah, he runs a sports advisory group.
Right over there. Yeah. So he would know, he knows the people who are experts in AstroTurf, if you ever want to have a conversation.
Yeah, I know him.
So, okay, so if it boils down to, are we going to make any changes in the, well, I think that you can have no AstroTurf, or can we start in category where you can have it if we, or after you've gone through and set standards and everything else.
Well, I think that's what we're gonna put in there, and we'll see what the city council wants.
I know, just said enhance the code for artificial turf.
There are pros and cons. Obviously, it's vastly different than the grass lawn, which is traditional lawn. For instance, everybody says you'll never go to AstroTurf, because the birds can't feed in it and that kind of thing. But if you look at how much fertilizer runoff into the intercoastal would be saved if all the Bel Air Beach was AstroTurf, be significant. How much reclaimed water would be saved if it was all AstroTurf, be significant. But it's a big issue in this board.
And we'd be, we'd be rid of the road hazards with all of the har, landscaping companies.
Yeah, I mean, have no more landscaper, no more law re-well-ing, couldn't say that. They'd still be working on trees and plant areas and that kind of thing, but it would significantly reduce time and heat, or.
So it's, it's a bit.
It's a good value. Yeah, it's a big question. The council needs to value, in this I've mentioned view, that's significant enough to me, that I think you go to some kind of vote by the residents of the city.
Yeah.
Yep, you can afford it, it would be.
Yeah, just think, it would amortize itself out fairly quickly, that's why I'd like to talk to an expert. One, because it's a pervious question, because you'd have to make it a purpose, and then what is the cost of house? I know how much I spend a year, actually every month, on my lawn, significant, well over $200, that's a pretty big AstroTurf payment. But I'll never get it because of marshmallows.
Next case.
If you get it overnight, it'd just poof, happen.
Yeah, then Rudy would be gone, the grass and Rudy would be gone the next day.
Next case.
I'm done.
Wanda? Or Angela?
Okay.
Sorry.
So the first one that I.
You can take your mask off.
Oh, yeah.
We're all shot.
So the first one was section 54-153 about the homestead exemption. I'm just not sure what we were saying, where it said, city manager Reeves will contact city attorney Riley to provide updates from the election.
That was, that was a November 2020 election. We had, we had a handful of constitutional amendments. Two of them dealt with homestead exemptions that would affect us, and those need to be, that's what needs to be reflected here, is from the 2020 election, general election.
Yeah, that's up for the city attorney.
Yeah, I was just curious though about the election, so did they?
They were approved.
Okay.
Additional exemptions were approved.
You can't deny people an exemption, can you? Did they meet the tax criteria?
No, no, this was just a, if there's any additional things that we need to update our code, that's all. And the city attorney would have to tell us if we need to update our code.
Okay.
I know there was what, widow exemption?
Widows of disabled veterans.
Right.
And wasn't there something about law enforcement? I forget.
Yeah. I know the will. There was both reasons.
And then it was just cross-reference in section 10-77 on the suggestion to add invasive species and cross-reference chapter 22. Do we need to cross-reference section 94-6, the landscaping requirements, so they all read the same? 94.6I says add water conservation shall be achieved by the selection of appropriate plant materials, the removal of nuisance and invasive vegetation. So you're talking about landscape requirements, shouldn't we reference? I mean, should they all just say?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, what specifically do I need to be doing here?
You've got, you've got it in there.
But there's a cross-reference between the two of them, so.
And the removal of nuisance, and.
It was 94.6, I think?
So we were gonna use the Florida State, the state's.
Didn't I get that in at this time?
Yeah, on 10-77, you've got it there.
But Lynn provided me some wording for the Florida State.
10. Page 10.
Page 10.
1077.
That's what I'm looking at, the thing that Lynn gave me, to make sure that I've got it, what he, what we put in there. Yeah, maybe I didn't print out the final one.
1077 says.
It's there.
Yeah. Florida State listed, noxious.
No, it's not there, it's right here, it's not in, it's not on what you've got, unless I've got the wrong copy here.
It is on 1077, you listed. It's on page 11.
And I'm working from the wrong copy here.
We put it there and cross-referenced.
I'm working from the wrong copy.
Chapter 22, is that section 94?
We didn't talk about putting it in 94.
Were you reading?
4-2 under definite. You put it in 94-2 definite.
Yeah, in the definition, but not as a specific.
But it's, it's referenced in the Florida State listed, so you gotta refer back to it, that's.
Yeah, all we were doing was trying to get an annotation, and you had to use that listing to get somebody to remove some.
Sure.
Because right now, the only real thing that's invasive that.
Poison ivy.
Is Brazilian pepper that's actually annotated in the code.
So should, should 94-63 refer back to 10-77?
Yes.
That's what I was asking, should they all match up?
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm just noticing that the section numbers are not in the miracle order in some cases. For instance.
10-2 is.
Section 2, it goes 245, 232, 233, 350, then 245, 247. And then in.
These are the ones that are changed.
And then in 10, there's section 22 and section 10, and then there's section 94.8 under the heading of chapter 10, and then it goes 10-3, 10-35, 10-37, 10-2.
Those were, I think those were the orders we discussed them in.
Oh, okay. But there may be different, but they're not in your order.
This is not the final draft, no.
It's why it still says draft.
Then the other one that I saw was just, the sentence looks like it's cut off on section 10-88, that's page 11. It says, in what time the container is held in.
Should be removed, it's probably.
Put out in the evening and removed in the morning, or whatever, Val, we're gonna.
Yeah, I think that's a discussion as far as timeline, council needs to decide.
Have a little problem hearing everybody.
I said that's a.
Set up by the garbage.
Well, no, what I'm saying, the city council needs to weigh in on that and say, do we want to stipulate a time or not? What you've told them is, should we?
No.
Yeah.
So to complete the sentence, what time the container should be removed?
Put out or removed.
Well, because the put out is already in the sentence. May be put out at the curb, and what time the container should be removed.
Right.
Okay, Angela?
I think that was it for me.
Okay. Brenda?
No changes, changes. No changes.
Wanda?
I had no.
Well, you wrote it, you ought to have some criticism.
I put a few titles here and there, but I was trying to fix those as I went.
I've got a couple items that.
Okay.
Page 11, under section 30-52. Constructed, not more for suggestion, add, replace, or repair, should have a permit. I think there should be something in there about a major repair. I mean, there's times the wind will blow something off my dock, and I'll just get a board and put it back on, or whatever.
Well, what the county's code says for dock.
What?
What the county's code says for dock, if it's structural repair. So as an example, if you're just putting a board on, that's one thing. If you're doing anything with the stringers or any of that, then you have to have a repair permit.
Okay, but should we say major repair, repair itself as nebulous?
Prepare to a structural member.
Yeah, maybe that's what we should say. Prepare to a structural.
Member.
That's probably.
That's a major repair.
Right. Well, not necessarily, it could be one board, but the county requires a permit.
Well, I know that, but if you, at least we can say major, and then whatever the hell the county says is fine. We follow what they say.
Yeah.
I would like.
So, okay, so what, so the suggestion should be, change the wording to construct, replace, and/or conduct a major repair, or repair a structural member? Which one?
I would say keep it simple, because we're gonna follow the county code anyway.
Construct, replace, and/or undertake a major repair?
Yes. So moved?
All right.
All those in favor? So carry. Let's see.
There'll need to be a structural member, that word structural needs to be in there. That's, that's what the county is basing everything.
Oh, we're following the code anyways.
So major structural.
A major repair either is structural?
You want it in, hold it now, we're following Robert's rules. Do you want to add, change the original motion?
I do.
All right, would you like to make that motion?
I move that we add structural after the word major.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor? So carry. Thank you, Rudy. Okay, let's see. Three items. On the very last page, section 2094-251, fences, walls, and hedges, we eliminated or galvanized somewhere else in the code. Why do we leave it here?
Last page.
On fences, walls, and hedges, add fabricated wood, vinyl, natural materials, or galvanized.
Well, galvanized we eliminated in the docks. We, the bolts you could use for.
Sure.
That's what we deleted.
This is a question. Are we talking about the regular chain link fence?
Right.
That's, okay, that's all I want to know. What's your interpretation?
That's what I would.
City manager?
I would interpret.
Okay. That was an observation.
Yeah.
I wonder if I might have just circled. Somebody took my sheet and shuffled. On section 10-32, page 90, permits, exemption. We're exempting wallpaper over 100, under 100?
Drywall.
Drywall. It says wallpapering.
And wallpapering. Well, the wallpapering is the issue, it's the.
I can't hear that.
The wallpaper isn't the issue, it's the drywall. That's the county code. If you put in more than 100 square feet, replacement drywall, you're supposed to have a permit.
But why should we have wallpapering there? Is that necessary to have that? You're gonna, I can see some person wanting to re, wallpaper somewhere, looking at that and saying, I need to permit the wallpaper?
No, this is saying those are exempted from a permit, that's the whole point of this.
That's what I'm asking.
The only thing we added really was the 100 square foot of drywall is exempted, because that's the county's code. The other stuff is already there, so we're not changing anything.
All right, thank you. Is there anything else that can come up under review and approve? If anybody can, all right? Is there any unfinished business?
We did have 94-161 to add plus one foot of freeboard.
Wasn't that in there?
No. That's, that's in accordance with the.
I read that.
I don't think I saw.
94-161?
Oh, here it is, I see it, yeah.
Yeah, 94-201.
Do we have a 161?
I don't, I haven't written that one.
Where did you have it, Lauren?
I had it up to 161, but I don't know why.
94-161?
Yeah, I think we were gonna add it there too, because of the height is in there. So it's gonna be above the 161 and 201.
So what are you specifically saying?
Just a notation that there's a requirement for plus one foot of freeboard.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all.
It's in.
Yeah, and we were gonna add it to 161. And 201. We'll get the attorney to give us a definition for modular, if that's in the section. We'll leave it at that.
Fair. Anything else under unfinished business?
Let me just verify for, uh, 113, I don't think I have that in here anywhere. I need to put that in and just say that we're deferring that to the, uh, review of the comprehensive plan?
Yeah.
Anybody even further?
I, I guess the only question I have is how is this going to be presented? I mean, this will be delivered to the council and just say, you've read it. Any questions, any comments? Thank you. Have a good evening.
Yeah, I mean, unless you want to go line by line. Just saying, these are the recommendations of the planning zoning board?
I think what, what our board's gonna do is, Patty, Patty, we got a terrific draft, now a final draft sent out, and we can all peruse it. And if anybody has any problems, they can get back to Patty. Express them, but I think it'd be presented to the council.
Right.
We don't have to beat our brains out any further.
And just say you've reviewed it, any questions? If not, thank you.
Refer to your congressmen.
Good luck with that.
Acceptable to the board?
That's for me.
Okay. Citizens comments? Where is Marvin?
Took the day off.
What I'd like to do. As a citizen of this city and chairman of the board here, I'd like to thank everybody that the city people have 100% supported this committee. Lynn and Laura and Patty have shown their support to us as we have to them. And I think if everything existed like this in the city, we wouldn't have a heck of a lot of trouble. I'm very proud of the board and their attendance. And I appreciate everybody showing up, giving your time. And I'll call us for an adjournment.
So moved.
All those approved? So moved.
Vote with your feet.